Call the Wilmer City Council Meeting to order for Monday, June 6th. Roll call.
Mayor Calvin.
Here.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Here.
Asmus.
Here.
Butterfield. O'Brien. Ask.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Plowman.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Seven present, two absent.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Our Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any proposed deletions or additions to the agenda as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion made in second discussion. Staff would like to add an item at the end of the meeting to consider a special council meeting for next Tuesday evening, a week from tomorrow evening, and the staff will address that at that time. Consent items, Ms. Thompson.
Mr. Mayor.
Motion to approve the consent item as pres- the agenda as presented has been made in seconded, all in favor, sign if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion does carry. Consent items, Ms. Thompson.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, on tonight's consent agenda, we have for council's approval, the city council minutes of May 16th, Wilmer Municipal Utilities Commission minutes of May 23rd, accounts payable report for May 11th through May 27th, park and recreation board minutes of April 20th, application for exempt permit for Kanduai County pheasants forever, chapter number two, application for exempt permit from West Central Ducks Unlimited, application for human rights commission for Allen Clark, application for the EDC operations board, Abdul, look, Abdul Karder, Abdukar Agal, sorry for the mess up there, consideration of state temporary liquor permit, Wilmer Lakes Rotary, a resolution to consider adoption of ASBID budget for project number 2203C, four resolutions to consider adoption of ASBID budgets for 2022 street and utility reconstruction amended due to assessment policy revisions, and for councils acceptance, so Wilmer Lakes area CBB board minutes of March 15th.
Second.
Motion made in seconded to approve, discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Asmus.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Next, we'll have a presentation from the C6 Drug and Gang Task Force by Agent Bill Hudson. Mr. Hudson.
I am not Bill.
I thought you looked more like Ross.
What's that?
I thought you looked more like Ross.
I do, yeah, yeah. Ross Ardauf, I'm a sergeant with the Kanduai County Sheriff's Office, and I'm the commander of the C6 Drug and Gang Task Force. This is Agent Bill Hudson, he's a deputy with the Meeker County Sheriff's Office assigned to the task force. For those of you that don't know what we are or what we do, we're a multi-jurisdictional Drug and Gang Task Force. We cover five counties, Kanduai, Meeker, Swift, Yellow Medicine, and Chippewa. We have a 3,610 square mile service area and cover approximately 100,000 people. We've got agents from Wilmer PD, a full-time agent, we'd have a current summer agent that just started with, from the PD today. We have two Meeker County deputies, a Swift County deputy, and a Kanduai County deputy in addition to myself. Bill, we'll get into some of the statistics and what we're seeing in the Wilmer area specifically.
Our trends lately, we have exploded. Meth is still king out here, we'll get into that a little bit, but our arrests, we vary, we'll, low end will be about 320 arrests in a year, top end will get right up to 400. And that's between our commander and then five other agents. The vast majority of our dealings, our interactions, our investigations is felony-level drug investigations. We focus on mid-to-high level drug dealers. We've also, we've kind of morphed into a violent crime, violent offender task force. And that's where we help out with homicides, suspicious deaths, major crime, major theft rings. So we, we do bounce all over. We cover essentially from Dassel to South Dakota. Our cases, well, I've had cases take me to Iowa, South Dakota, North Dakota, I haven't been to Wisconsin yet, not eager to get there, but our cases don't know boundaries, so neither do we. We do venture to the cities a lot, trying to keep this very short and sweet. So our meth seizures have, as you can tell here, in the last three years, we would bounce around 10, 12, 15 pounds, that was normal for us, in a year. We've gotten up to just shy of 60 pounds. In 2020, we were chosen as the task force of the year for the state of Minnesota because of the cases and everything, that we've just jumped so highly. 2019, you see our gun seizures was very high there. Normally, they're not that high. We got into a couple cases where the individuals had enormous amounts of guns. So that's why that one's so much higher. We are normally around, I'd say, 50. As you can see, for children removed from residences and that, that would be for mainly child neglect, endangerment, and meth in presence of a child. So that's why our, we do bounce around 40 to 50, so last year was pretty high, was 64 of them. As you guys have probably tell, the last, so far this year, our heroin, our fentanyl seizures, has exploded. We go to the commander conference every year, I'm the senior agent, so Ross chooses, has me come with him, and we were the least affected area in the entire state when it came to fentanyl. Now, it's exploded in our area. These, we call them dirty thirties, they're fake Percocet pills, they're fentanyl, and that's where we've been having so many overdoses on, and our overdose deaths. So we do have some pictures. We do get into the gangs as well, Ross, and we have two other gang agents that can enter into the gang files for the state of Minnesota. We have been seeing more and more gang activity, namely here in Wilmer. When people ask, sorry, but Wilmer's our bread and butter when it comes to our stats. It just is, it's our biggest city by far, and it just happens to be where most of our gang members do congregate, happens to be around here. Here's some photos from our major busts over the past couple of years. Oh, must be methamphetamine, let me go back.
Do you want to do meth?
Well, let's show the pictures, they're kind of cooler. Pictures are more interesting, at least in our other presentations. So you'll see some of them, these are some of our larger busts. Some of these did have some loose cartel connections, and it, it kind of in the, this year's been different, so the drug trends, if we wanted to really get the major weights like this, we had to follow our pipelines to the metro. They all came out of Minneapolis, St. Paul area, and now it has morphed, this year, our larger seizures have been starting here in Wilmer. Through postal carriers and other areas like that, it's being shipped here, and so our mid-level dealers, our, what would be considered our high-level dealers here, have really graduated. They have grown exponentially. Fentanyl. We'll just move, the dirty thirties, there's what it is. It's very hard for us to even make a traffic stop and not come across this. People we know and would have intel on would only mess around with maybe marijuana, maybe methamphetamine, our methamphetamine dealers and that would be just namely meth. And now they've all graduated into fentanyl in some way, shape, or form. The most common paraphernalia is what you see on the right-hand side there, those tinfoil strips, often heated, they put a pill, one of those tiny little pills, is just a fraction of a size of a button, those pills are very small. And they are marked, they are stamped, but they're generally, they're just created in a house somewhere. So they'll put one of those pills on one of those sheets of tinfoil, and where you get that black marking is when you heat it with a lighter underneath, and they'll have those cut straws or pen tubes that are hollowed out, and they'll hold those in their mouth, and they'll just inhale through that pen tube, the fumes that come off of that pill. It has been just kind of crazy. We're having younger kids now that are just graduating from lower-level marijuana-type crimes, petty, petty crimes, they're graduating into this stuff. And honestly, I can't tell you why. Out here, just to give you an idea about those pills, why maybe someone would even try to sell those, you can buy them in, for Minneapolis, $5 a pill, out here, they're anywhere from $20 to $50 a pill. All you have to do is drive it two hours west, and you are quadrupling your, your, you know, investment. So there is so much money to be made into them. Plus, with them being smaller, it's easier for them to hide and smuggle around. So that has been our big obstacle so far this year, has been trying to combat that and get ahead of that. We have had success in the cases with getting the county attorney to get on board and charge the third-degree homicide and first-degree manslaughter in one of our recent ones. We've had success in one of our dealers in the past, he's recently been released from prison, but, so this is kind of what we're, one of our hurdles.
Does everybody know what fentanyl is? Synthetic opioid, 50 times more powerful than heroin. What we've seen and what we've been told is that the fentanyl is manufactured in China, shipped to Mexico where it's pressed into pills, and then transported across the border into the US, and that's when we deal with it. The addiction is, is crazy for these, as opposed to even heroin, it's way more addictive, way stronger, and it's extremely dangerous, so. That's kind of what we're seeing.
When they come down on them in the jail, it's, they are, it's like someone being tortured. They're curled up in the fetal position, and it's just, it's not a pretty sight. So it's been a challenge for the jail as well in handling these persons.
Well, thank you for your presentation, council, any questions? I know Councilmember O'Brien had, had requested you guys to show up, and he's out of state, so he wasn't able to attend, and he sends his regrets, so.
Sure.
He appreciates the fact that you gave the report. Council, any questions? Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you for the presentation. Not, not fun stuff to read, not fun statistics to read, but it's real life and it's, it's important. What is the tasks for, the task forces' opinion, I know that you guys deal with a lot of the, the logistics of, of following the criminal track and whatnot. What are your opinions regarding communities, and your thoughts regarding communities and whatnot, in terms of proactivity? What communities can do, I mean, I know, you know, locally, our police force here, we still continue the DARE program, I remember it from grade school, awesome program, I went to my son's graduation from the DARE program this year, and that was a proud time, and the kids are, are, are like, all about it. But we talk about, and we keep seeing in the news, you know, younger and younger people that are associating with, with this, and so I'm just wondering if, if the task force ever meets or talks about, either locally or at a higher level, about what communities are doing on the other end of things in terms of, of dealing with the criminal element of it, but, but the proactivity in terms of deterrence.
It, to me, I mean, talking with a lot of them, it, it, the younger ones, how desensitized they are, just kind of astonishes me. For doing stuff like this, kind of their living conditions, they just.
That's a lot of it, a lot of these children grow up in households where this is the norm, the drug use, the addiction issues, and it progresses as they get older, too. It's, it's hard to get in the middle of that and, and prevent that from happening, obviously the press releases with the pills and the dangers. We can put that out there all day long, but until they want to get clean and want to stop using, I mean, here we are. So we, we try and educate as many people as we can, we do a lot of presentations throughout the year, and, and try and get the word out as to what we're seeing and what's dangerous, and hopefully that deters some people, but it's, it's a hard cycle to break.
If, if I may, Phil, thank you. So I guess in your opinion, then, it's a, it's a supply-demand thing, and as long as the demand is there, the supply is going to meet it, so I guess in my opinion, I, I appreciate information like this, because the more it's disseminated to the public, the more we know as community members and families and whatnot, that this is something that we got to try, get ahead of, because it's scary. I mean, having young kids, this, this is terrifying, and, and when you read the next news story about a younger person who has, you know, fallen into this, I mean, everybody thinks this is a big-city metro thing, or a Los Angeles thing, or a Dallas, Texas thing. And so when it hits close to home, then we look at our young kids and we go, what can we do? And so that's why I'm, you know, hat tip to our local police force and their officers, and the school liaison, and the school resource officers for everything that they do, as well as all the information that you guys compile, and then, you know, any of the ways that we can interact together and try to, try to do something. Thanks.
Just no comments. Councilor Gregory.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So you guys, so you, you go to South Dakota, but you don't cover Lackawaro County, do they have their own task force for that area?
Lackawaro used to be part of the C6 task force, they've had the sheriff change over there throughout the years, and they've dropped out of the task force, they kind of do their own enforcement thing. We go there usually once or twice a year to help them on cases, if they need, you know, extra bodies or whatever to do a search warrant, but they don't pay into the task force, no.
Yellow Medicine runs us up to the border, so that's why I say that.
Oh, it can be that way.
Yeah.
Okay. Because I see more and more people from the metro moving out west to the rural.
Yep.
Secluded areas, and it gets kind of scary out there sometimes when you go to these properties, so. If, if someone does see something, who should they contact? The local police, the sheriff department, or?
All of the above.
Yeah, they can contact their local PD or sheriff's office, and if it's something drug-related, or something that needs some additional surveillance or follow-up, they'll get ahold of us.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, I want to commend you guys for the work you're doing, you know, the two charges that you mentioned earlier, the homicide charges and the manslaughter charges, you know, that takes a lot of work to make that happen. And how do you feel our local, our local judicial system is working? I know, you know, I, I go to a lot of different cities across the state, and I hear a lot of them saying, you know, the catch-and-release, you know, you gotta, you gotta catch the purse before you catch the walleye, before you catch the northern, before you catch the muskie, you know, and is it kind of the same thing? I mean, you gotta get them in front of a judge a number of times before anything is done, or are our local judges and judicial system pretty good?
Well, we are.
That's a pretty straight-up question.
I'll, I'll say, we're not Hennepin County, thank God. When, when we're doing a, a 20-pound case in Hennepin County, and they're flat-out telling us that that's not enough for us to hold them overnight. It's, that's sad, we're nowhere near that. We are, we are considerably better than that, but we're not nearly as strong as we used to be. I've been on the task force for seven years now, a little over seven years, and when we first started, we were considerably stronger. The state is just trending away from that, so we're kind of getting caught up in that, but I don't want to work anywhere else doing drugs.
I'll, I'll put it this way, we get frustrated, we put a lot of work into some of these cases, and we're the ones going to the houses and dealing with the, the families and the children that are laying around meth pipes or whatever. We take it personal, sometimes maybe more than we should, but that's why we're effective, because we care, so it is what it is.
Well, I've got a couple more questions, but, you know, you bring up an important point, Ross, you guys are working with some really tough stuff, and we care about you guys, and you need to take care of yourself. You know, take time, get the help you need, if you need help, get the support you need. And I know, I used to be in public safety, I know we want to put on that tough exterior shell, but there's times when, you know, make sure you're talking to the people, I know you guys probably debrief yourself, but make sure you're talking to the right people and getting your help, because if you guys aren't effective, we're not effective. And so we really appreciate the work you do, but you need to take care of yourself, too, so, okay? Take that to heart, guys, okay? So I'm a guy that did 45 years, and kind of probably should have taken care, better care of himself years ago. A couple other questions. On the Narcan, that Senator Baker worked really hard to get that Narcan law passed, are you seeing that used frequently within Kanduai County, within the city of Wilmer, and do you feel it's effective, is what we were led to believe it is?
Absolutely. We carry it with us on search warrants, just in case one of us goes down, but, I mean, it's been deployed with the sheriff's office and the PD and saved lives, I mean, lots of lives, to my understanding. We haven't administered any on our search warrants, but I know the guys on the road have, and have brought people back, so absolutely.
Would be more first response, right there, when somebody does have an overdose and that, and it's extremely effective.
Sure. Okay, great. And then my last question is, the city took a pretty bold statement, the, the council took a very bold move in hiring a forensic officer for the police department. Generally, that position is held within the sheriff's office, it's not held within a police department, but we felt, the council felt very strongly that that position was needed within the police department to do some work. On some of the stuff that you're seeing, you know, I can just draw some analogies, but have you found that to be an effective tool in your toolbox when you're trying to get these search warrants put together, and, and is it helping with some of those search warrants in your guys' view?
He's an incredible asset to the police department, and he helps us with our cases, downloading phones and helping with doing reports on the forensic analysis of the phones, he's incredible, a great asset to the PD, for sure.
I've had federal agents on the phone with us saying, go ahead, send the phones down, and I said, well, you know, we have a guy here that will help us with it and do it, and they're astonished, and they are immensely helpful on it. Where we would have to go through the state or other people, you're talking like six months before you would start getting evidence back for federal investigations, going through them, you're talking a year, year and a half to two years before you'd even get the evidence back. Having him here has been just great.
So you kind of think the council made the right decision?
Yes, very much, yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
I believe that as well, but I just, it's good to hear that when we do good work, you know, a lot of times we get busted all the time for, you know, you're wasting money, but I kind of wanted to circle that back and just say, hey, you know, this is something we did proactive, and if we can help with this problem. You know, it was very concerning to me on the number of children that are being removed from homes. You know, I've talked to the county administrator, and, and he said, the stuff that you guys are seeing is just horrendous, so. And I know, I haven't worked the street for a long time, but when I did, it was getting a lot worse, and, and seeing kids in those really bad, bad situations, it's really hard on you, it really is, as, as a parent, so, and a grandparent for me now, so. Thank you, guys, for your report, thank you for keeping it brief, we made it long, but it's valuable information, and you guys are doing a good work, and just let me, let me remind you, take care of yourself.
Thank you.
Thanks much, appreciate it. Next, we have a public hearing for Minwest Technology Campus Abatement. I'll open the public hearing at this time.
Good evening to Mayor, Mayor Calvin, members, members of the council, this is how it's going to go tonight, I'm just going to introduce Jim Seben, the CEO of Novatek, and the CEO of Minwest Technology, it's Minwest, Minwest Technology Campus Management Company, and then he's going to give his presentation on the abatement, and then after that, I'll follow up for any questions.
Okay, great. Mr. Seben, welcome back, we haven't seen you for a while.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Glad to see you.
Yeah. Councilmembers, have any of you been to one of these presentations before? Okay, because I'll, I'll go through it rather rapidly then, so we don't, we don't take a lot of time, because there's substantially the similar information, and as we, as we have done in the past, with the, the additional buildings that we have just completed, purchased through the state of Minnesota. So just a little bit of background on how, how this has all transpired, and in 2005, we, we started looking at the possibility of, of purchasing the campus from the state of Minnesota, and converting it to what today is Minwest Technology Campus. And there was an enormous amount of collaboration to allow that to happen. It was across the boards, the, from the, the chamber, from the city, from the county, from the school district, there was a lot of things that transpired to actually allow this to happen. And we have had this partnership going for many, many years, it's a wonderful partnership in, in the goals of, of building a campus out here that brings technology-based companies to the campus. So Minwest Campus is, we've got a partial breakdown of, of what we're going to ask for tax abatement, so on, property values, Minwest financial information, Minwest Technology Campus investment, economic development, Novatek engineering on the campus, and a closing overview. So to start, we are asking for tax abatement of $133,509 from the city of Wilmer over 10 years. Minwest Technology Campus, for that, agrees to generate 75 new jobs from the campus tenants over the next 10 years. The agreed investment in Minwest Technology Campus will be prorata $2 million. The $2 million investment will foster primarily local labor and trades. Our, our history has shown, we substantially use local labor and trades in, in the work that we do. This investment will primarily be invested in the taxable properties, thereby increasing their, their value when the tax time comes for them. So if you were to look at the, the properties that we are requesting abatement, it is the three properties on the left, we have just recently purchased those from, from the state of Minnesota. What our agreement has been is, you know, we've been in collaboration with the state of Minnesota all along here, and we agreed to a, a rate or a price for the campus, and to break that down, we broke that down into a value per building. And some of the buildings remained in control by the state of Minnesota, and we then were to give a two-year notice when the buildings were to be, we needed them on the campus as we continue to grow. So that would allow enough time for the state to find other facilities. I, I think you'll recall when, when they left and built the facility right out here by, by the high school, one of the, one of the things that we talked to the state about was that we wanted to make sure that all of those jobs stayed here in Wilmer. When we were asking them to leave, we were asking them to strongly consider that that facility stayed here, so the jobs would stay here. And so when you, when you look at some of the things that we continue to do for, for the area, that was one of the main stipulations, when I worked, I worked with Dave Baker, Representative Baker, on that happening. So we're asking for the three parcels. If you look in the middle section here, these are, these are properties that we are presently receiving abatement on, and the far right is properties currently under abatement with five years remaining. Oh, I'm sorry, I said that wrong, the center is the group, our very first group, that is, we've completed the abatement on completely. And so you'll see where, where we're at with each of those abatements. So Kanduai County's average yearly taxable property values, so when we look at where we started here back in 2021, we had, we had, this is the increase of taxable value that we see as we move forward, you would be receiving these actual tax payments. So when you look at a 10-year tax abatement, the last line is what will kick in for adding up the total tax abatement, or taxes that the, the, the city will, will receive. up the total tax abatement, or taxes that the city will, will receive. So here it is, this beautiful campus. You know, we talk about it being a very college-like campus, and it's just fun to see people out and about now that summer's here again, walking around the campus. Very nice trail that's been put up here by the county, and a lot of, a lot of really cool things that happened. So one of the really important things for us to see and know is that our two companies, so Novatech Engineering and Life Science Innovations, share the ownership equally of Minwest Technology Campus. And our companies, to, to keep it, get it going and keep it going, we continue on a monthly basis to subsidize the campus. We have, we have a lot of facilities being filled, but we continue to have to subsidize the campus to actually make it, make it happen there. So when you look at this, our net, our net subsidy so far has been like $3.18 million that our company's, half Novatech, half Life Science Innovations, that has put that, those dollars in. And we, we use that against the rent, the rent that we are receiving. So you'll see how that has worked out here. And then while looking at that, you can see that we have $22 million that we have put into the campus since we started. Now, it's interesting, because the state of Minnesota, when they were looking at this and reviewing this, they estimated that it would be about $28 million to refurbish all of the buildings and have to bring them up to value. So when you look at it, it's, they, very, very close estimate on what it actually takes to do this. So I just wanted to show you, this is an actual invoice that Minwest Technology Campus sends to Novatech Engineering on a monthly basis, that we pay $21,817. Now, this is over and above our actual lease. We lease, Joanna, how many buildings is it now? I don't even know. Six or seven buildings that Novatech Engineering is leasing out there.
Pardon?
Twelve. Twelve? That Novatech is?
Twelve, thank you.
See, I don't even know. I can't keep up with it. But, but on top of that, this is a monthly payment, that is that subsidy every month. And then LSI has that same exact amount, so we share that. So here is the campus count as of 2020. If you just look at that number, I'm just going to page back and forth for you for a second. Here's, here's the count that we had in 2015, and again, 2020, where we're at with employee counts on the campus. Okay? So that's how that's been going. So when we look at, you know, our annual budget here, you know, this is an actual total year-to-date expense, and this would have been as of April, I believe. So this is the, this is actual, I'm sorry, actual revenue that we are getting and using against the subsidy that we, that we put in. So our financial here is, we have notes payable of $2 million to the affiliates. So if, if Novatech makes a little extra money, we will borrow that to Minwest Technology Campus, or same with LSI, if they have a little extra cash. So when we say affiliates, that's, those dollars are there. And then going through the individual, down at the bottom is the actual loan that we have out there. So our total borrowing is $4.4 million right now against the campus. And just, I want to point out on the right side here, some of the things that, that are the highlights of this. This is when we look at the first 100 years of history of our company, of actually what was the Wilmer Regional Treatment Center when we purchased it. Main buildings were constructed starting in 1907. It's a architectural style, it's a Spanish colonial. The original purpose was a healthcare facility, alcoholic, drug, drug addiction, schizophrenia, that type of thing. And Minwest's goal at the time when we first purchased this was to preserve that while restoring and repurposing that, the facility. So then we, we moved after the purchase in 2006, January, when we purchased it. We, our Phase 1 was a $6.25 million infrastructure investment that we put in, and we added data center and cafeteria. We had 12 buildings, businesses, I'm sorry, 12 businesses and tenants, 200 full-time employees at, at the end of 2008. We had two visits from Governor Palenti, and those were some really interesting things, because the state had a lot of help for us all. So if you remember the Job Z program, I would say that Novatech Engineering is almost a prototypical, what they wish they would have gotten out of all companies, with the, with the investment that they put in as the Job Z program. So from 2009 to 2011, we added four more million and completed on, on campus daycare, at 28 businesses and 328 full-time employees. Some of the featured tenants at that time was Cargill Inc. and Tenex Health. 2012 to 14, we had 5 million more in auditorium, cafeteria, meeting spaces, 40 businesses, and 450 full-time employees. University of Minnesota was, was coaxed here, excuse me, was coaxed here, and that was an interesting challenge for us to get them to be a part of our campus. We felt that really to make it a very legitimate campus for businesses to come to, it sure would be great to have the University of Minnesota out here to have quick and easy access to, and we successfully accomplished that in this span. 2015 to 2020, 8.1 million additional was added. We increased and remodeled the cafeteria and several conference rooms. At that time, we had 27 businesses, 693 full-time employees, and Novatech Engineering expanded into the shrimp industry. We don't have time for that, because that's really super exciting. So I just wanted to do this. When I was part of the chamber here, you know, one of our meetings, we talked about, what is the value of an employee on the camp, in our community? And, and there was no, we didn't have anything that really brought that. So I put this spreadsheet together to kind of show what someone that makes $50,000 means to the community. Now, some of the things, pardon me if I picked the wrong bank or whatever here, but it was just really to demonstrate where, where does the money get spent? And so when we look at this, and we say an employee of earning $55,000, and you just kind of run down there, and you see they buy a $220,000 house, and, and then they have the bank, they borrow the money from the bank, and then they, what they bring to the school and city, and then you got your energy and all of that. So I just broke this down for us to really have some means of really feeling, what, what does, what does it mean to have another employee in our community? So if you take that and extrapolate that to the third column there, when we say 660 employees that are on the campus now, and based on that same $55,000, you look at the bottom line there, that's $36 million annually to the community. And then if that continues to be there for a 20-year timeframe, we're talking about $1.3 billion into this community to have 660 employees at $55,000. Those of you who are real familiar, I actually demonstrate the community bounce by where they spend their money, on the left side there. When we talk about money bouncing around the community, and you take a Forex bounce on that, we are now at $5 billion running around the community based with 660 employees. So, Novatech Engineering. So Novatech Engineering has 302 employees, and they're broke down in 118 in production, 29 in customer service, 78 in engineering, 49 in repair and refurbish, 14 in business systems, and 3, 13 in admin. We occupy 113,000, 113,000 square feet of the campus. We have four newly remodeled buildings for offices and assembly and testing, and a newly built facility for the fabrication that we have there. Novatech's growth is roughly 15% growth per year. Our products are leased, they're not sold. We are paid by the process. We have a contract with our customers, where we have patents on, on some of our development, and they pay us every time they use it. So every little bird that runs through our machine, it's, think of it as a chook, chook, chook. And when you, when you look at that, that process is what is the sustaining process for us. It's a really unique business model, and it has been very successful for us here. 96% of our revenue comes from outside of the state of Minnesota. Over 73% of our revenue comes from 59 foreign countries. Over 73% of our revenue comes from, oh, I said that already? Never mind. 85% of our new products shipped goes to the foreign markets. Machines are built here in Wilmer. And what's really cool, we have a, how we manage our repair and maintenance, it's all done here in Wilmer also. We don't run around the world fixing our machines. The parts and pieces come back to us, and we fix them here. And that's what keeps the employees here in our community. So, Minwest Technology Campus involvement, some of our science and technology partnership things that we do is, I'm going to hear you're familiar with the MAPS program. MAPS program for seniors and juniors is an excellent program. We have probably ended up with four or five interns out of that program, that two or three of them have come to work full-time for us after those internships. It's a mentorship program. We do also mentorship programs for robotics through schools, New London, Spicer, and Wilmer. We have Minwest Technology Campus Foundation scholarships that we do every year, and Ridgewater College donations and scholarships also. So when we look at the focus to new community businesses, board members of, I am a board member of the Minnesota Chamber, and board members of creating the Entrepreneurial Opportunities for our KCEO program, the kids, fabulous program, really great. Board members on Ridgewater College, we do an ag conference annually here on our campus, and we also have people who are board members, Joanna, of the YMCA. I believe Aaron Mattson is also on that now, too. So important points that I'd just like to repeat. So, the 2021 LSI NTE, Novatech Engineering subsidy to the campuses was $523,000 in 2021 alone. Life to date is 3.3 million of that subsidy. Life to date total investments has been $22 million. Our loan against the property is at $5.2 million. Our employee count on campus now, I believe this was just updated, 693. You had an 800 number, Joanna, would you help me with that?
Eight thirty.
She sent this to me like 40 minutes ago, and I'm going to remember that, right? Eight hundred and thirty employees on the campus now. So our average salary is estimated to be right around $55,000 here on the campus. You know, when we look at with a 3% annualized increase and a Forex bounce, again, $5.2 billion over 20 years is, is the estimated value of those. That was 660 employees. Joanna just mentioned, we have over 800 now. Going forward, we ask for a continued partnership with the county, and the city, and the school district in asking for this tax abatement. Again, for that partnership, we're asking for $133,508 from the city of Wilmer over 10 years. We plan to generate 75 new jobs. We have a future 20-year value of the community of 75 new employees, and that is estimated to bring a value of .6 billion dollars over a 20-year period. The agreed investment would be a prorated $2 million, and that would be local labor. And the investment will be primarily invested in these taxable properties that we, we are presently asking for abatement. And going forward, Minwest Technology Campus will be paying a minimum of $95,900 per year, jumping to $165,800 in 2026 in taxes to the county. Was that to be the city that says county? It's both, city and county, sorry. Was just double checking that number. And that's all I have. Thank you for your time, and I'm here for questions if you need it.
Counsel, what are your wishes?
I'll make a motion to adopt-
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, hold on. I'm a public hearing, so we've got to close the public. Anybody from the public that wishes to speak? Again, asking if there's anybody from the public that wishes to speak during the public hearing? Mr. Walker, you have any closing comments, or you good? Okay, with that, I'll close the public hearing, bring it to the council. Counsel, what are your wishes, or do you have questions before you wish to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution to grant the Minwest Technology Campus's abatement request as presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. No discussion. Counsel member Hasmus.
Well, other than I would just say, I always continue to say how lucky and fortunate we are to have this campus here. And so when we have new people, like our new assistant city administrator, Kyle Box, when he comes, I'm like, you have to go see this place. It's amazing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, very good.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. So I know the county approved this already?
Yes.
What, what terms did they do?
Sarah, you want to come up for that one? She's-
I'm taking these toes off. Mayor, members of the council, the county, Candyway County did approve the tax abatement. They approved a step-down version of the abatement. So abatement can either be 100%, again, that's of the new taxes generated with these renovation projects that are being planned. So there's, the, the three buildings that they're renovating have already been brought onto the tax rolls because they bought it from the state. And so now this is additional revenue that's going to be generated by the renovation of these buildings. The county, instead of approving 100% for 10 years, which is the request from Minwest Technology Campus, they approved it in kind of a three-part step-down. And so that's 100% for the first four years, 70% for five years, five through seven, and in years eight through 10, it's at 40%. For the city to do the same version, that total abatement would be $97,462 instead of the full 133,509.
Okay. And I think staff is recommending the sliding scale. Okay, and I think staff is recommending the sliding scale.
Just for comments, Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, uh, for the presentation and, and all the in-depth information. Uh, it's been an exciting project to watch over the last, um, well, it's now turning into decades, but it's really cool. Um, so we're talking about, uh, property tax abatement specifically pertinent to three specific properties. Is there any details or information that you can share regarding those renovations? Is that for, um, 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 Novatek LSI usage? Is that for prospective new clients? Is that for existing businesses that are on the property?
So some of each. Uh, Novatek is in, in, in much need of elbow, say, elbow space, more, more room, um, uh, and, and, but it also is for future other, um, there were some, in these facilities that we just, um, purchased, there was some uniqueness in the space which allowed us to have different types of space, um, to offer to potential tenants. And, and so we, we needed to bring that on. There's not necessarily at this time, things lined up for, for some of this, but, um, it, it just gave us another type of space to be able to lease.
Sounds good, thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Nelson?
Just taking clarification on the motion. Motion as it's written, um, here says as presented. Are we, um, accepting it as presented or on, um, staff's recommendation?
Motion that I understood is it was as was presented by the, uh, Minus Technology is what I accept, is what I understood the recommendation.
Is that correct?
Um, yes, just because that was the recommended action, but I would be open to a friendly amendment with the staff's recommendation on the bottom of the overview.
Mr. Scotter, City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, I actually had the same question when the motion was made, if it was as, uh, re- as requested, we'll call it, or as recommended by staff in the packet. So as long as the mover and the seconder are on the same page about the intent of the motion, you're good to go.
The intent of my motion was the step-down. That is the staff's recommendation on the bottom. Should I clarify it?
Give the amount.
Okay. Um, ten-year abatement in a sliding scale.
Let's, let's rescind the motion that's on the table.
I'll make a motion to rescind.
No, you just have to rescind it.
I'll just rescind it.
Second or-
Rescind the second.
Okay. We have no motion on the floor at this time. Uh, council, what are your wishes?
I'll make a new motion to, um, grant a ten-year abatement at a sliding scale. Years one through four, a hundred percent abatement. Years five through seven, seventy percent abatement and years eight through ten, forty percent abatement for a total abatement of ninety-seven thousand four hundred and sixty-two dollars.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Um, I just wanna point out to the council that we're talking three thousand dollars a year. Um, and, uh, when we look at the chart that Mr. Seben has prepared, um, that is having a bounce of almost six billion dollars a year in local investment. Um, I understand the motion, I understand the revised motion. Um, I was somewhat excited when I heard the first motion, but I, I, uh, I allow council to do their work. Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to echo that sentiment just a little bit. Um, I, I, I'm, I'm, I did not, admittedly, I did not watch the counties meeting, so I don't know their reasoning or their justification for these step process and I don't know exactly what. I understand the concept of a, of a sunset process, but when we're talking this dollar amount over this amount of time, um, I don't feel as though the initial request by the originating party is, is out of line and as mentioned, um, I don't feel that three to four thousand dollars annually, um, I feel like that's kind of splitting hairs and, um, especially when we're taking a look at the, the type of business and the amount of work and, uh, uh, the impact that they've had to date in our community, especially, um, you know, on a, on an industrial level, um, I don't feel that it's such a stretch to, um, to go ahead and approve their request as they're requesting it.
Councilwoman Davis.
Um, I liked the first motion better. I feel like Midwest has put so much into our community and our community would not be the same place without it. Um, so that's just my, my thought. Thank you.
Councilwoman Nelson, follow by, Fagerly.
So, um, just asking for clarification on why staff recommended it as is. Is it simply to follow the county or other, other reasons beside that?
Yeah, good evening. So, two reasons. So I guess, uh, first, just kinda, over the past couple of years, kinda the history of the abatements, they've kinda, there's, I think Midwest Technology Campus has been the outlier. I think there have been a lot of deals that have kinda gone defunct. Um, and then in kinda talking with the county and the reason for, for that was 'cause some of the abatements, when the abatements ended and sunsetted, they weren't ready and in a position to pay for, to pay their taxes and it kinda caused them issues. Um, I think also, um, short of an edict from Midwest Technology Campus regarding, um, who they rent to, um, about the location of their employees, where their employees have to actually physically show up in Wilmer every single day, um, there is no guarantee. I think what the, I guess like the climate of like the workplaces, as hybrid work evolves and as remote work evolves, um, there's just no guarantee that all of those six hundred and ninety-three employees or the employees that are ever added, all live in Wilmer, um, all, we're, all come to Wilmer to work every day. And so just with those two things in mind, staff recommended the graduated sliding scale.
And I think you meant Candy White County, right? Not Wilmer specific?
Oh, yeah, yeah, Candy White County, yeah.
Just one follow-up question. Will you be going to the school district to ask for this also?
Yes, that, that is the plan. Just one, we're working with one at a time, just get it, get it squared. So yes, it is the plan to go to the school district also.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would say if you would've came to the city first, you'd probably got the full value. But when you went to the county and they get over fifty percent of the tax dollars, they must've saw something. We don't ha- I mean, this council, we're not, uh, experts in this field. We have to look at staff and our staff person says to go this way, so that's what I'm following, so.
Just some comments or questions?
I kinda concur with the comments both made by Councilmember Plowman, Councilmember Davis and, uh, more eloquently by Councilmember Fagerly. I think if you'd've came here first, you'd've gotten the whole abatement. Um, you know, we like what you're doing. You're doing very, very, very good work. Uh, you know, I can't put enough areas in there. Um, I know that the chart that you developed on your economic impact is used statewide and actually more than statewide, actually. I've heard, I've gotten calls from other states that said, who's this Jim Seben guy that put this chart together? You know, is this guy know what he's talking about? And so as the mayor, that really makes me happy. Um, but, you know, we do have a motion on the floor. Um, you know, I think back, uh, we need to, we need to remember the creators of this agreement when it was put together. I think you were at the table. Um, you know, Mr. Heisinga, um, Steve Rehnquist, Kathy Schwantis, uh, Dean Johnson, um, and I have heard from all of those people, um, just what made this project work and what made it work was that it was good for Wilmer and it was good for Candy White County. That's what made it work. And a lot of people put a lot of work into this. Um, you know, your agreement with, uh, University of Minnesota, um, having that here during the bird flu epidemic that just happened again, we didn't wanna see it repeated, but it did repeat itself. Um, the economic impact to this community by having the, uh, Men Rock in, in Wilmer, Minnesota, the economic impact to this community was astronomical. And I think a lot of times we forget about, we look at numbers on a piece of paper and we don't look at the side benefit. Uh, you know, I was over to the emergency operations, uh, office because they had to sign my EOP, uh, card and there were people there from Tennessee, Alabama, North Carolina. Yeah, that's heads on beds, folks. That's, um, that's tourism, uh, because our tourism tax is collected by heads on beds, even if they're here working on the bird flu. It doesn't make any difference if they're out enjoying our lakes or if they're out at the campus doing good work. Um, you know, I take a, take a look at the work that, uh, Epitopics has done within our community and in the planned work that Epitopics wants to do here in our community. Um, all of that happens because a couple people had a vision and a couple people ta- came to the table and didn't get everything they want and didn't kill projects and made projects happen. Um, that's what makes a community strong and, uh, this is a shining example and I will, again, in my final comment, uh, say I'll echo what Councilmember Fagerly said. Um, you know, you're appreciated in Wilmer. We appreciate you a lot. Um, and I'm ready to vote if the council is. Roll call.
Councilmember Asmus?
Aye.
Ask?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nays.
Thank you. Um, thank you for the work that you do.
I wanna add one thing. Joanna just told me that State Farm is here right now, just, uh, leasing some space for us while they take care of all of it.
Oh, sure, sure, sure.
So it's that, that same kinda thing that happened. So it's just, I just found that out just, uh, twenty minutes ago.
Sure. And I think that's an example of when you have the space available, it's professional, you have access to high-speed internet, uh, you know, uh, all of those things bring additional jobs to Wilmer and, uh, we are so fortunate. Thank you for the good work you're doing and I thank the Heisingas as well and Joanna, you're doing a pretty good job too.
Yeah.
Appreciate you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. You bet. Next, we have a public hearing on ordinance authorizing issuance of general improvement bond series twenty-two A. Uh, Mr. Okens.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, uh, we are looking tonight to, uh, have you introduce a resolution calling for a public hearing on the ordinance, uh, to issue up to five point six million dollars in general obligation improvement bonds. Uh, first of all, Mr. Green, uh, sends his apologies. He had two other, uh, bond sales tonight and, and conflict, so he asked that I, uh, do the presentation for him. Uh, to give you some, uh, detailed, uh, history on the process, the city annually, uh, issues street improvement bonds. Uh, it has fit into a ten-year program prior to this. Uh, the bonds are to cover costs that are not available through other revenue means such like municipal state aid, uh, utility improvements and other funds from other governmental agencies. Um, the bonds, again, as I mentioned to this point, have normally been for a ten-year program, uh, based on discussions by past council action and retreats. Uh, this year's bond is, is being proposed to be for a length of fifteen years. Um, the special assessments, uh, paid, uh, special, the bonds are paid for, for by special assessments and a community investment fund and any kind of tax levies that may be decertified if there are, uh, sufficient funds in the community investment fund to cover that debt. Uh, the total street improvement project, uh, plan for twenty-twenty-two is estimated at nine point seven million dollars of this amount, uh, up to five point six million, uh, maybe needed to finance with, uh, roughly over two point three million in assessments projected at this point. Uh, some financial impact is that the city would incur, again, up to five point six million dollars of additional debt, uh, to pay for the improvements not covered, uh, by those other revenue sources. Uh, and this would increase, uh, the debt service annually by approximately five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, of which two hundred and fifty thousand annually is estimated to be, uh, collected through assessments, leaving about a three hundred thousand dollars to be funded with tax levies and/or community investment funds if available. Uh, as of the end of twelve thirty-one twenty, the city had a hundred and thirteen million dollars in debt. Uh, in twenty-twenty-one, uh, we issued twenty-one million dollars of new debt, the majority of that primarily being the local option sales tax projects. Uh, we retired, uh, a little under, uh, forty million dollars and that was primarily due to the hospital debt, uh, being retired, uh, through the lease with, uh, Caris Health, leaving a balance at the end of twelve thirty-one twenty-one of, uh, a little under ninety-four million dollars. Of that ninety-four million dollars, fifty-seven million was for the waste treatment plant, which is paid for through waste treatment revenues. Uh, eighteen point two million, uh, was for sales tax revenue bonds, which are being, uh, collected through the local option sales tax. Uh, two and a half million dollars is general obligation bond, bonds for improvements to the ICE arena for, uh, the new, uh, ICE system. And the remaining fifteen point six million for street improvement bonds, which are being paid through assessments and community investment funds. Uh, there, all the, uh, tax levies to this point have been decertified and the community investment fund has been able to, uh, pay for, for those portions. So tonight, again, we would ask that you introduce a resolution calling for a public hearing on June sixteenth, I believe is the date.
June twentieth?
June twentieth, I'm sorry. Um, at the next council meeting to, uh, hear the ordinance for the sale of bonds. Be happy to answer any questions.
So moved?
Motion made and seconded. Do we have a projected interest rate?
Uh, it is at three point five percent, Mr. Mayor, and that's been given to, uh, staff to, uh, send out the assessment notices, which the city historically has added two percent to that.
Right. And a year ago, we could've borrowed money at less than one percent.
I believe the sales tax bonds were at about one percent. That's correct. Interest rates and investment rates have increased steadily, uh, since the first of the year. Uh, investments, uh, again, you would normally have to go out over a five-year period about a year ago to, uh, get anywhere close to one percent or even close to that. Um, we just did an investment last, last week on a five-year step-up on a yield to maturity average of four percent. Starts, coupons start at three percent and gradually increase to five percent by the end of the maturity of that investment.
Okay. Um, and then, um, my final question is, is that we increased the levy by three points.
Two, uh, basis points, Mr. Mayor. Three hundred and, three hundred and some thousand dollars was increased in the levy for, uh, two basis points.
And so for the two basis points that we raised it, does the debt service cover that?
The debt service would actually start, not this year, but it would start next year. And so that levy this year, I believe later on your agenda is being proposed to be used for the seal coating project. But to answer your question, uh, the annual, uh, payment of three hundred thousand, as I indicated in the committee action form, that two mils would cover that.
Okay. So the amount of money that we increased is going a hundred percent towards this street project? Potentially?
I believe this year is being proposed to be used for the seal coating project, but for years in the future, it could be applied to this debt. That's correct.
Okay. Additional comments, questions? Councilmember Nelson?
I'm trying to remember when we had our presentation, is there, do you know what the difference in the interest rates or the bond rates are for ten years versus fifteen?
I don't recall that at this time, but we certainly can provide that, uh, to the council.
Okay.
I, I don't remember that at this time.
I wondered if anybody else remembered when we had the conversation about, um, if there is a difference.
I don't believe it was substantially different between a ten-year and a fifteen-year, uh, bond. It may have been, uh, maybe one or two basis points only, maybe if that.
Okay. If that's available, that probably would be okay. Thank you.
Okay. We will have that for the public hearing on the twentieth.
Okay. And I know that back then, we were anticipating that those interest rates would be down close to that one percent and I think, yeah, I think Mr. Green had suggested maybe to consider one and a half, but of course, as we all know, the markets have increased like you stated. Additional comments from council? Okay. So we have a motion that's been made and seconded, um, to, uh, call for the-
Introduce a resolution.
Introducing a resolution for authorizing issuance of general obligation improvement bonds. Roll call.
Councilmember Ask?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Asmus?
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nays.
Thank you. It's too bad we missed out on that low interest. Um, next, we have the twenty-twenty-two annual stormwater report presentation. Sarah, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Uh, thank you for giving me the time tonight to present the city's annual stormwater public meeting. Um, it is one of the requirements of our MS four permit. Uh, MS four, you'll hear that, some, you've probably heard it, but it's municipal separate storms- sewer system. So, stormwater is the rain and the snow that melts and runs off roofs and parking lots, driveways, other hard surfaces. It drains into our stormwater collection system, excuse me, through the catch basins along the curb, and is then carried to lakes and rivers and stormwater ponds. Stormwater is separate from wastewater. It travels through a different sewer conveyance system, and stormwater is not treated before it goes to our lakes and our rivers like our wastewater is. We do have several concerns with stormwater. The quantity of water that's delivered during a large rain event or a sudden snowmelt, the speed at which all that runoff hits the surface waters, the pollutants that stormwater carries with it, and the lack of groundwater recharge that happens because of it running off the surface. Stormwater pollutants, there are many of them that get carried to our surface waters along with that stormwater. New, I will mention, in our current version of the MS4 general permit is a requirement for cities to have a regulatory mechanism, so an ordinance or rule or contract language to meet water quality volume treatment requirements, a regulatory mechanism for proper salt storage, and a regulatory mechanism to address pet waste. So all efforts to reduce the amount of pollutants that are entering our stormwater. Chloride has been kind of front on our radar for a few years now. Low levels of chloride in our surface waters are toxic to aquatic life, the macroinvertebrates, the fish, other things that live in our waters. So another new permit requirement is to develop a written snow and ice management policy along with winter maintenance staff training. You'll possibly see me several more times before the year is up for those regulatory mechanisms. So, we know the problems that are associated with stormwater and what are we doing in our city. It's our responsibility to protect both the surface waters and the groundwater from stormwater pollution. So our city's Stormwater Pollution Prevention Program, or SWIP, covers how we're working to do that, and there are six areas of the program. The first is illicit discharge detection and elimination. So we need to ensure only stormwater is entering our storm sewer system, no wastewater, no groundwater. We identify illicit connections, failing pipes, and we correct them. This past year, staff smoke tested sections of the sanitary sewer, both in downtown and near the BNSF rail yard, and we discovered an unkept storm sewer cleanout in a private parking lot that was remedied. And afterwards, we lined a section of severely deteriorated sanitary pipe with a UV cured-in-place pipelining to prevent stormwater contamination and groundwater infiltration in that area. The second area of our SWIP is construction site stormwater control, which means making sure there's adequate erosion and sediment control practices in place on construction sites, and that those practices are being maintained throughout the life of the construction project. So silt fence, inlet protection, rock entrances to prevent sediment tracking out onto the streets are all examples of that. The third area is post-construction stormwater management, which means annual inspections of all of the city-owned stormwater ponds, structural stormwater BMPs, like our slump catch basins, our grit separation chambers, and all of our outfall inspections. The fourth area is pollution prevention and good housekeeping. To that end, the city now owns two street sweepers, and they're operated basically snow off to snow on, and they collect 5,000 cubic yards of salt, sand, grass clippings, leaves, other debris annually. The city's snowplow operators have all been through the state's Smart Salting for Roads training, and we've been converting our fleet of snowplows from, or over to ones that can apply brine, not just granular salt, which has reduced our salt use by almost 50% in just a few years. And the brine is generally a more effective winter maintenance product than granular salt is. The fifth area in our SWIP is public education and outreach. So we have our Rain Barrel Cost Share Program that's been going on for a few years, our social media education campaign, our Public Works Open House that we hold every year in May, and this year, we also, I did a presentation to the Wilmer Area Lakes Association as well. And the sixth and final area of our program is public participation and involvement. So that includes this annual meeting. We'll present, or we'll post this presentation on the city's website so that residents can be there, too, and then they can contact staff, me, or the other staff that are listed with questions or feedback they have. The Adopt a Drain program is also a way they can be involved. So you can go to adoptadrain.org, and then you can pull up this map, and you can either put in your address or search in your neighborhood, or maybe there's one near a park that you like to go to. So the blue markers are storm drains that have been adopted, and the yellow markers are storm drains that are available to adopt. And it's a little bit similar to like the Adopt a Highway program, where you adopt a storm drain, you spend some time throughout the year just cleaning the debris from it so it's not going down our storm drains, five minutes a few times a month. You can log into this website then, too, and report how much you're collecting, and you can see throughout the city or the state. There's several states that are doing this program now, too, so it's pretty cool. And I will leave you with this list that is just easy things that all of us can do, but maybe some reminders that we could use every year on how to prevent some of that pollution from hitting our stormwater. And I'll take any questions.
Okay, at this time, this is the public presentation for our MS4. And so I'll ask if there's anybody from the public who wishes to ask Ms. Seitzam any questions? Anybody from the public that wishes to ask any questions? Seen in hearing none? I'll close that portion and bring it to the council. Council, any questions or actions you'd like to take? Councilmember Fagerly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Sarah, again, for another great job. So have we increased our rain garden plots in town? Private citizens ask for anything?
Yes. So the city doesn't cost share or help with the technical side of rain gardens, but the county does, and there have been several going in, especially around with lake shore owners. It seems to be catching on there, I would say, more than other parts of town, but...
Because I know when Holly Wilson was here, she planned one in Sunrise Park by the walking path, and it didn't last too long, so it's not there anymore, so just wondering. And our former council member, Fernando, I always said "mo win." We don't hear that that often anymore, so it's good that you said that again, just remind us, but thank you for...
Councilwoman Osk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Sarah. Can you tell me a little bit about the Rain Barrel Cost Share Program? I don't know about that.
Yeah, so we started it just a couple of years ago, and we partner with two other cities, and we buy a literal truckload of rain barrels, a semi-load, so we can get bulk pricing, and then we pass on that savings to our residents. So this year, the rain barrels that we order come from Canada. They're made in Canada, they come from Canada. We're waiting this year on getting our delivery. We're hoping for July. We have a couple left from last year. So they're, you know, around half or 60% of what you can buy a rain barrel for if you go online or go to the big box stores, things like that.
And how would we buy that from you? Where would we go for that?
Yeah, so you can just contact me. And if you go on the city's website, I believe under the engineering department, and then stormwater, and then the rain barrel program, it's listed there. So they can call me or send me an email, whatever's easier, and we just find a time to coordinate that pickup. And we've gotten, oh, gosh, hmm, close to 100 out, probably, in just, and one year, we couldn't get the shipment across the border either. So in just a couple of years, we've been sending rain barrels out. They're great. I mean, it's like a gateway BMP, so you just put a rain barrel up, and then you water your flowers in your garden, and then pretty soon, you're like, oh, maybe I could have a rain garden, I still have a lot of rain. And then you're like, maybe I want a bee lawn, maybe I don't want to mow this at all. And then it's a gateway BMP for stormwater.
Ms. Valiant, maybe we can talk to our IT people and have that on the front page so when we first open it up, that buy a rain barrel is their right to start with, just for a couple of months or something?
Currently, we're showing that they're $55 a barrel.
Councilwoman Nelson?
I have two rain barrels, but I am interested, where do I find information about plant or rain gardens? You said that the county has some information?
The county, yep. So the SWCD, the Soil and Water Conservation District, because they work throughout the county, and they have a lot of state grant funds that can help cost share those, usually between 50 and 75% cost shared. And then they also have the technical people to help design that, to help you pick the plants that you want, make sure they're Minnesota hardy. You can get ones that look kind of more wild and unkept, or you can get ones that look more intentional, more like maybe English cutting flower garden type things, too, so...
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to accept the 2022 Annual Stormwater Presentation.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Additional discussion? So last year, I believe, you talked about some ordinances that we had to adopt. I know we adopted one of them.
Yes.
But I thought another one that we had to is similar to what Councilmember Nelson just talked about, is that to allow that longer foliage in front yards. Wasn't there something about that that we talked about?
I think that was discussed. It is, that ordinance is not required by the new MS4 permit. There are a few that are that will have to adopt by October. You can change the ordinance language that's there to allow for longer vegetation. There are cities also, you've probably heard, you probably just heard about the no mo may that a lot of cities were doing, that can kind of say that we're not going to enforce that ordinance for the month of May because of these reasons. But yeah, we can, we can bring that to council if you have an appetite for that, for sure.
I would certainly have an appetite for that, you know, because I get calls about the address on 7th Street on a regular basis about that yard. And so, you know, I've just basically said, you know, it's a bee garden. I mean, it's, yes, it doesn't meet the eight inches, but, so that's maybe something that staff should look at and consider bringing back to us. I have a couple of questions. Councilmember Fagerly already talked about the grass clipping, so glad you had that. But Mr. Manzer and I had a conversation with an individual a couple of weeks ago, in the last couple of weeks. So as I understand, our stormwater conveyance system does allow us to store some of that water in the street during those heavy rain events, and then to go out, kind of metered out through the stormwater system? I mean, that's acceptable, and that's the way our system's designed, correct?
It is. Jared may be able to explain it more eloquently, but at some point, Sean said the same thing that, yes, during heavy or sudden rain events, it is designed that there will be water in the gutters along the street. They will not be, they will not be wet but empty during a rain event or immediately following that, and that capacity seems to be the thing that engineers are building in.
And so we actually design our system to actually retain some of that water within the roadway?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then I know that you addressed the 200 detention ponds that we have that the city owns in your report, but we have private detention ponds. And those private detention ponds, as the previous reports I remember hearing, we have not really developed a protocol for getting those cleaned. Is there a process that you would recommend to us, not tonight, but a process that you could bring back to us to recommend on how we'd clean those private detention ponds? Because the detention ponds were part of the improvement plan when the property was approved by council.
Right.
But when those then become overgrown and filled, become full of cattails, weeds, other things, they no longer work in the function, they no longer function in the manner that the council intended when it was adopted, so. And I know that in the past, you know, when I've talked to you about this, you know, you said it's kind of hard to enforce that. And so if you have a recommendation to bring to council in regards to that, it would be nice to hear that as well.
Yeah, absolutely. We can look into that.
Additional comments or questions from council? Roll call.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Osmas?
Aye.
Osk?
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nays.
Thank you for your report. You are very thorough, you did a very good job. We're very fortunate to have you, so thanks for your good work. Next, we have consideration of ordering improvement report for 2023 street and other projects. Mr. Vogi, our consulting engineer?
Good evening, mayor, council. The first item in your packet here this evening is related to potential 2023 improvement projects. A couple of weeks ago, council had the opportunity to tour all of these streets identified in this report this evening, and witnessed firsthand the condition of them. Staff has been collaborating both internally and with Wilmer Municipal Utilities on the needs around the community, and has identified these project areas as priorities for further study as part of a improvement report. So the figure is also included in your packets this evening, kind of gives a pictorial view of those streets that are being considered, and a resolution required by the Chapter 429 process has been enclosed for your consideration. And with that, mayor, council, I'll stand for any questions that you might have.
Motion to adopt a resolution ordering the improvement report for the 2023 improvement projects?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. I wasn't fortunate enough to be on the tour that day. I had a family commitment that evening and was unable to be there, but I have heard from a couple of council members that they thought that was very useful, a very good tool, and I also talked with the administrator about that. So thank you for arranging that. I know you worked, Public Works Director Manzer, to make that happen, so thank you for, thank you for that firsthand tour, so. Motion made and seconded, discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Osmas?
Aye.
Osk?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nays.
That motion passes. Next, we have consideration of professional service agreement with Bolton Mink for the 2023 construction projects.
Good evening, mayor and council. The projects identified for 2023, we have developed a cost proposal associated with those. We have broken them down, similar to the projects that we did for 2022, into six categories, being preliminary design, design, bidding, construction services, project closeout, and project management. That has been done, as discussed with council in the past, should, following the preparation of the feasibility report, if council identifies a different street that they would like to pursue, or a street that perhaps they feel should wait into the future, then the broken-down costs are identified there and no additional work takes place on that project. So that's the reason for the breakdown. Preliminary schedule's been identified also there for council. This will provide an opportunity for the improvement hearing to be completed sooner than the 2022 improvements, and ultimately, the goal here that staff has been working toward is continuing to accelerate these projects so that they can begin early and be completed before snow flies. So with that, mayor, council, I will stand for any questions that you might have regarding the proposal.
Make a motion to approve the professional service agreement with Bolton Mink?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. Councilwoman Plowman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Jared, for the initial numbers and estimates. Just a question regarding cost controls here, and maybe you can give the council a refresher as to how our professional services agreement works. Are we still currently operating on like an hourly basis? And if so, how does that factor into the estimation for professional services for large-scale overarching projects like this?
Sure, good question. So currently, we are still operating for all of my time on an hourly basis. Anything related to day-to-day questions, site plan review... Anything related to day-to-day questions, site plan reviews, there's a lot of stuff that happens on a day-to-day basis, and that is the hourly agreement that City Council has approved. Specialized projects, larger-scale projects, we always submit to the council a estimated cost associated with those because I will be the first to admit that these types of projects take way more than just me to complete. And those numbers, similar to the proposal that I've included this evening, are not to exceed number. Those are also completed on an hourly basis, which means that if the projects take less time than what's identified here, city pays less, but those costs do not exceed those numbers identified in the report for you this evening, so.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. I think that helps. Also, is there, is there a general rule of thumb still in the civil engineering world in terms of street remediation, construction, whatever? The percentage of soft costs, like engineering costs, to that of construction? Is there kind of a sweet spot that you're seeing the trend staying around these days?
Yeah, so, and ultimately, it depends entirely on the type of project that it is. A mill and overlay project is going to have a lower percent in terms of construction cost because the amount of work is less as it relates to replacing some curb, taking up some pavement and repaving versus a reconstruction project where you have sanitary sewer, water main, and storm sewer. So, in terms of a mill and overlay project, that can range a little bit depending on the volume of traffic associated with it. But ultimately, you're kind of in that twelve to fifteen, sixteen range. In terms of construction costs, a reconstruction project typically can range from twelve, or from fifteen to approximately twenty-one, twenty-two, somewhere in that neighborhood. So, when you meld them together, it just depends on the, the volume of mill and overlays versus reconstructs. I believe as, as we reviewed these numbers with staff, when we put them together, we're in approximately that overall combined in that seventeen to eighteen percent range, so.
Okay, and final question? Construction costs are going up, and, I mean, inflation hits and construction overall is going up, but I, would you agree with the statement that engineering costs haven't, they're not rising as fast as at construction costs?
Engineering costs are not rising as fast as construction costs.
Okay, thank you. I'm done.
Councilmember Ask?
Thank you. I'm looking for a history lesson. I don't know who's going to be able to provide me with the answer, but prior to entering into the hourly agreement, we would have had an engineer on staff, right?
The hourly agreement was entered into as a result of filling the void of the city engineer position.
And so, my question is, what kind of precedent would have existed for something like this when we had an engineer on staff? Would that have been something that we bid out to multiple, you know, engineering firms? Is that something that would have just been kind of an automatic trigger with Bolton and Mink? Is that something that wouldn't have even been done?
So, the most recent history while the city's former city engineer was in place, very similar to this process, a proposal was requested, and then it was presented to council for consideration.
So, the staff member would have reached out to Bolton and Mink to request the, okay?
Yep.
And we used to figure fifteen percent for engineering services. So, we're looking at about two percent increase over that, but then we don't have the in-house costs.
Correct, I remember that, yeah.
Not sure if that was in your question or not, but additional comments or questions? Okay, we have a professional service agreement with Bolton Mink for twenty-twenty-three construction projects. Motion made in seconded. Rule call.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Ask?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Six eyes, zero knees.
That resolution passes. Next, we have epitopic sanitary sewer extension project. Mr. Vogi?
All right, good evening, Mayor, council. Bids were received for the epitopic sanitary sewer and water main extension projects. We had a great turnout, and then in terms of number of bidders, we had eight bids received on that project. The bid, or the bid tab is enclosed in your packets this evening, and you can see that, generally speaking, perhaps with the exception of the highest bidder, all the bids were within approximately five hundred thousand dollars of one another, so it was a a great bidding climate. The low bidder, who submitted the, the low bid for the project, was Landwear Construction in the amount of one million three hundred and sixty-three thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars and twenty cents. One thing I did want to note, the project did receive grant funding for the sanitary sewer component of that, and we have had discussions with Minnesota Deed regarding the favorable bids that were received. One of the things with that grant program, when the project was advertised and bid out, we separated it into two sections, if you will, a sewer section and a water section. That was done entirely for the purposes of grant tracking. And so, we are recommending that council award the project this evening, but the second item, the as-bid budget portion, we would like to bring back a separate as-bid for both the sewer and the water for those grant, same grant reporting processes. Numbers, numbers don't change, it's just a matter of making sure that everything is in alignment with that deed grant for two separate water sewer budgets. So, with that, Mayor, council, we are recommending awarding these epitopic sanitary sewer and water extension project to Landwear Construction in the amount of one million three hundred and sixty-three thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars and twenty cents.
I'll make that motion, Mr.?
Second.
Motion made in seconded discussion. Councilmember Fagerly?
Jared, have we worked with this company before, so?
I'm trying to remember the last time Landwear did a project in town specifically, but we have worked with them recently, and they do good work. They've actually, they've, they've been in contact with us very frequently. They want to get started as soon as possible and start acquiring, you know, getting the contract process moving so that they can start acquiring their materials, their piping, their manholes, and all of the likes, so.
That's a good thing.
Jared?
Nice to see, and as a reminder to the council, this is a cost share also with epitope, with, yeah, epitopics. They're doing a cost share with this as well, so nice to see these bid come in. And again, part of that grant, I mean, we got a lot more grant money because Deed agreed to pay for, I believe they agreed to pay for the sanitary, right?
That, that's correct.
And then we had to pay for the water.
That's correct.
So, yeah, so it's very favorable for us, and the sooner we can get this done, the better, because I know epitopics is chomping at the bit to get building, and we don't want to lose that project, so, yeah. Okay, additional discussion. Rule call.
Councilmember Fagerly?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Ask?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Six eyes, zero knees.
That resolution passes. Next is consideration of project awards. Project number twenty-two oh eight B as in boy. Fog coat and to Camco Inc.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I bring before you tonight, asking the city Public Works recommendations.
Asking about adopting the budget, but he asked to wait.
Oh, okay.
We're good?
We had a side conversation going on, so I wanted to make sure that there wasn't a question here, so.
Okay, coming before you to ask a recommendation of adoption of a resolution awarding project number twenty-two oh eight B and twenty-two oh eight C seal coat and fog seal. And I can tell you that the twenty-two oh eight B project is the, the Ortonblad area. I won't list the streets, but several of them down there. And then there's a section just north of the Bethesda Pleasant View Grand. That's the proper name of the new Pleasant View Nursing Home there. And then there's a section down on the Pleasant View Edition, Twelfth Street, Fourteenth Avenue, and then a little bit on Pleasant View Drive. That's, that's the B. The C is area in Industrial Park, we out by Ralco in that area there. And then there's a piece up in Valley Brook to the west of Conroe Five, and then there's some in, I guess it's called Oslo Meadows, the Oslo Heights, the northern part of that addition there. And then there's some in Upper and Lower Trentwood, and there's a little piece over by off of Lakeland Drive, it's Eleventh Avenue. That's the, that's the two projects we have before you.
Make a motion to approve project number twenty-two oh eight B?
Second.
Motion made in seconded discussion. Rule call.
Councilmember Osmus?
Aye.
Ask?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Six eyes, zero knees.
That resolution passes.
I'll make a resolution to approve twenty-two oh eight dash C.
Second.
Motion made in seconded discussion. Rule call.
Councilmember Ask?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Six eyes, zero knees.
That resolution passes. Thank you. Mr. Manzer, Public Works Director. Next, we have Mr. Baumgart, our parking rec director.
Good evening, Mayor, member of the council. Tonight's motion will be to adopt a resolution approving change order number eleven in the amount of ten thousand dollars, five hundred forty-four dollars and eighty-four cents. This change order is basically for us to put an asphalt path in between the two rector fields. In your packet, you'll see the reason why, especially with the recent rains that we've had. It just gets flooded out. It brings dirt and debris into the turf fields, and this is something that I'll probably will need to address in the future anyway, so this would be a great time to do it right now.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made in seconded to approve the change order as presented. Discussion. Councilmember Fagerly followed by Osmus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, is this going to be lost funds?
Correct. It'll come out of the contingency funds.
And then, were you planning on paving this in the?
It was not part of the original plan. When I did a walkthrough and we just noticed, and we had a soccer program out there, and it was just, we're just running into too much debris and gravel and dirt coming out onto the field. So, we're like, we can coincide this when we're doing the pavement with the event center, so that's why the, the dollar amount is favorable for us. So, we're, that's why I'm bringing it to you guys, so we can get that tart.
Because I know when the baseball season started, they couldn't use any of the fields at Baker, so they wanted to use the turf.
Yep, and so.
There was no walkways.
Yeah, we created, the, the gravel was there, but yet it was so mucky that we ended up getting some plywood, getting it laying down, and so they can get to the field. Now, this will just give us a hard surface for them to go from the high school side and also on the civic center side. So, it'll go from basically where the walking path is at on the civic center side, all the way along the west field is what we call it. And then there'll be a Y that'll go over to the east field and still continue to the path to the high school parking lot.
So, that should be done by July or August?
Yes, yep. The paving for the event center will happen, I was probably saying, in three and four weeks.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Osmus?
Just a refresher for me. So, this will come out of the contingency fund. Where did the money come from for the fencing?
From the contingency funds as well.
Okay, we're still sitting, okay.
Sitting good.
Councilmember Ask?
I know it's three hundred dollars, but it looks like we're accepting the higher bid of the two?
Nope, we've only received one from Donuts.
Looking at a Marcus Construction?
Oh, because they're the project manager, so they have to add their fees on to it and everything.
Thank you. That makes more sense.
So, their construction management and risk, insurance, and everything.
Council, any other questions? I'd like to see, you know, from the mayor's office, I'd like us to try to control costs as much as we can. And, you know, some of these things can wait until the project gets closed out. I know I brought this up before. And if we can do them ourselves, then we're not paying the additional fees.
Yep.
You know, I mean, we're, we're paying additional fees, additional fees, additional fees, and, you know, similar to, you know, we could have done projects last year for the streets for one percent money, now we're paying three percent money. And, you know, it all costs us money, and we really have to be containing these costs. I mean, it's, we really have to watch this stuff, so. There's my complaint for the day. Rule call.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Ask?
Aye.
Six eyes, zero knees.
That resolution passes. Next, we have a consideration of reapportionment, reapproportion of funds to purchase lights for Swanson Field, yellow, Swanson Field, Yellowfield.
Yep, member, Mayor, member of the council, part of the light project is in the twenty-two capital improvement plan. When we first got the quotes back in two thousand twenty-one, we had two hundred and thirty thousand dollars set aside for the lights. Talking with Musco and other vendors about how to get this project completed, we did look at how we're to do it, like what we did with the orange field, by contracting it ourselves, about getting the lights hung by us acting as the general contractor, and for us to find our own electrical contractor to do it. That was a very expensive process for us. So, going back to Musco, talking to them about our situation, they've come up with the, the proposal of two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars to put the lights in for us. So, we'll need to reallocate dollars from the light pole project to make this project complete. So, the motion tonight is to adopt a resolution to reallocate six thousand forty-one dollars from the two thousand twenty-two light pole capital improvement plan and approve the purchase of Musco Lights for Swanson Field Complex for the amount of two hundred and thirty-six thousand and forty-one dollars.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made in seconded discussion. Councilmember Nelson?
I, two different questions, but did we actually bid this project out, or is?
This is part of the cooperative agreement that we, that we can go through with Musco to get the lights.
Okay, so that's, that is through that process instead of bidding?
Correct.
Okay. Then my second question relates to the signal light pole. I know we've put that on hold. It just would be nice to finish it, and I was just curious where we were at with that. I was trying to remember. I think we stopped or something, but I was just asking for clarification on that.
We stopped because the, the state is not doing that this year. They're pushing it out to next year. Yeah, I believe that's.
The state is looking at the Highway twelve, Highway twelve reconstruction, and so we didn't want to do anything with the painting of the street light, of the signal light poles this year because we may be able to eliminate one of those, and so that's why we didn't, that's why we pushed that out.
But there are.
For painting.
There are ones, other places that didn't get finished on.
I think these were designated for Highway twelve, though.
That's what the funds were designated for?
Yes.
Thank you.
Additional comments or questions? Rule call.
Councilmember Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Ask?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Six eyes, zero knees.
That resolution passes. And just for the council, just a reminder to the council, Mr. Box has the drawings, so if anybody wants to see the drawings on Highway twelve, I know myself and I think Councilmember O'Brien were the ones that came in and looked at that. So, those are in his office if you want to see those, those drawings that Min dot is proposing for the reconstruction. So, if you want to schedule time to do that, that'd be great. Next, we have a consideration of reallocation of funds for the Dorothy Olsen Aquatic Pool Heater.
Yep, tonight to adopt a resolution, reallocate two thousand nine hundred and thirty-five dollars from the two thousand twenty-two light or signal light pole capital plan for the purchase of additional items at the pool here. I know at the last council meeting, we approved the pool heater. It was discussed I was going to go into a different location. After revisiting that, it's probably not the best option for us. It's the best option to keep it back into the mechanical room, and then we will move the chlorinator and everything out of that room to help keep, preserve the pool heater. So, with that, we would have to buy additional, have additional items inside the pool filter room. So, we do have a few extra dollars left over from the pool heater budget, but we will have to reallocate additional dollars to put the stainless steel plate in there that has the window in there and additional plumbing.
Make a motion to reallocate funds for Dorothy Olsen Aquatic Center Pool Heater upgrade.
Second.
Motion made in seconded discussion. And Councilmember Fagerly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, when is the heater going in?
We are working on it as.
We are working on it as we speak, so we need to get that water warmed up.
Because I had a bunch of parents whose kids are lifeguards that went in the pool today. It was very cold.
It is cool.
It's supposed to open Thursday to the general public.
Yep.
And we haven't had the sun like we normally would have, so.
Yeah, we lived without it all last year, but we had a really hot summer. Talking with Britta, it's like we need some warmer temperatures or the pool heater to get here. I know when we talked about we're going to be able to isolate it, so when the pool heater does come in, the pool will still be able to operate, we'll be able to isolate, get the pool heater in there, and then we'll be up and running as soon as we can.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, because I've received calls on that, too. People asking if we're going to have hot water or warm water at the pool this year, because people were reluctant to buy their passes and stuff, not knowing if it was going to be warm because of last year.
Yep.
So, so.
Fully aware of it.
Yep. I received a number of phone calls on that as well, so.
Oh, roll call.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Ask?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Next, we have consideration of an amendment to the zoning ordinance to allow for brew pubs in three districts. Mr. Walker, Planning and Development Director.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of the Council. So this is just strictly to set the public hearing for the next council meeting to introduce brew pubs into the zoning ordinance. So, I guess if you remember several years back, that taprooms and brew pubs were introduced into the Muni Code, but only taprooms were introduced into the zoning ordinance. So technically, if a brew pub wanted to start in Wilmer, I would have to tell them they could not, as it's currently constructed. So this is an amendment that I think is just kind of purely an oversight of the process from several years ago that just needs a minor correction.
Looking for a motion to set the public hearing date.
So moved.
Second. Motion made in second to set public hearing date for June twentieth at six thirty-four PM. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That motion, those opposed, that motion carries. Next is consideration of an ordinance amendment to zoning ordinance industrial uses.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, we forgot to do the publish by summary.
Well, we're not, we're only introducing the hearing.
We still have to publish the ordinance, the full ordinance, so to save costs, we do it by summary.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made in second to publish the ordinance by summary. Again, this takes six votes of the council, and we only have six members present, so I think most of us went to school in Wilmer, so we can figure out the math. So if we have any dissenting votes, it will not pass. All in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries. Next, we have consideration of ordinance amendment of zoning ordinance industrial uses. Mr. Walker?
Good evening, Mayor, Members of the Council. So this is, I think, probably the first part of a, I suppose, a three-step process to kind of get us to a place where we're getting away from uses to more so, well, not uses, but getting to NAIC codes. And NAIC code stands for North America, North American Industry Classification System. And so we've just kind of been going over the industrial uses. I know several months back, we had inquiries about what uses were allowed in the industrial district, and that kind of, I guess, motivated the Planning Commission to start looking at the uses again for each of the districts, which was something that they were doing in the past. And so we finally got around to getting the I-one and I-two district addressed as far as adding some things in and kind of taking some things out. And this is a process that we're eventually going to complete over the next several months. And so it's just the first part, we need to set the public hearing for modifying the uses allowed in the industrial districts in town.
I'll introduce that, Mr. Mayor, and publish it by ordinance. Or. By summary.
I know, I know what you mean.
Yeah.
That's scary.
Yeah.
They're two separate actions.
We're going to set the hearing date for June twentieth. Motion made, is there a second to that?
Second.
Motion made in second at discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 We have a motion to publish by summary. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Motion made in seconded, discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Next is consideration of recommendation to the Charter Commission from the Planning Commission to remove the capital improvement program review process. My understanding is that this is coming to us for information, and that you are looking for guidance from the council, because it would take an affirmative vote of the entire council in order for this to move forward to the, to be passed, or else the Charter Commission would have to have a special election. And so, go ahead, Mr. Walker.
Yeah, so over the past several months, just kind of working through the, I think, the modified capital improvement process, I think some members on the Planning Commission were a little surprised that they were kind of, they had editorial, editorial authority over the capital improvement plan, I think, as in the past. And quite frankly, most of them really weren't comfortable with that. They didn't feel that they got on the Planning Commission to determine if the fire department got a new scrubber, or if another department got vehicles, or things of that nature. And I think kind of, just kind of looking through like the process and kind of looking at how it's kind of evolved over the past decades, the process is totally different from what I think it was intended. I think initially the Planning Commission was included be, because they wanted them to think about what the land uses were, and if there were any acquisitions that the city needed to make, or if there were any strategic purchases that the city needed to make to be included in the capital improvement plan. I think at some point in time, the Planning Commission's suddenly became involved in the minutia of it, as far as like, what are these two thousand dollar expenditures, or is this a vehicle expenditure, or is this a software thing that you're looking at? And then once it kind of transformed to that, I think then it kind of became a little bit more of, why are you even involved in this? I think from some entities that used to report to the Planning Commission, and then I think also just with some of the departments as well, it's just kind of, whoa, as a planning commissioner, I don't really know anything about this. And then it's scrutinizing like the experts, either on staff or like some of the other entities that used to have to report to the Planning Commission. And so just kind of out of a sheer, I think like respect for the process and respect for like what other professionals know, I think they would like to advocate this authority away from the Planning Commission, since it's kind of transitioned from what it initially intended to be. So I think that's, that's kind of why the Planning Commission has kind of got to a place where they would like to see this removed from them, and I think also just kind of, it'd probably expedite the process on the staff side as well.
Okay. So on the background that I was given on this is that the Planning Commission, or the Charter Commission, last year had brought us a couple of recommendations. I think we passed one of them, and one of them that we didn't pass, and they'd spent a considerable amount of time working on it. And so just looking for some direction to bring, because if there's adamant disapproval of the council, it's just a waste of staff time and the Charter Commission's time to look into this. And so trying to expedite that process so that the Charter Commission doesn't spend, you know, meeting, meeting after meeting after meeting, come to us with the recommendation only to have us vote it down, is kind of what I was told. And so, so I think what they're looking for is, is there support to bring this to the Charter Commission, or would council prefer to not have that happen, not have that removed? And if that's the case, it can still go to the Charter Commission, but with the understanding that, you know, you may, you're probably going to end up in a, in, you know, probably have to bring it for a special election. So I guess that's, that's kind of the reason why this is coming to us. You know, we've heard from the Charter Commission that they don't like doing all this work, only to come to the council to have it rejected, is what I've heard. And so that's kind of why it's in front of us. So, Councilmember Nelson?
Having served on both those boards, I have been an advocate for another body to be able to look at the CIP process and kind of to be tracking. What I understand is this is not happening in the CIP process, and so I can understand the Planning Commission's frustration with some of this. I think it would be helpful to see what the wording is in the charter with that, and then to have an understanding of if we are changing our CIP process, which has kind of been alluded to, that perhaps that would be more helpful before we make a recommendation one way or the other.
Comments? Councilmember Plowman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this makes sense, and I think, I think Mr. Walker illustrated the points fairly well. I think when this, I think the idea lends itself well to a smaller community, a city of a smaller size or a smaller town, whatnot. So as we've grown, it only makes sense that we've, we've developed these different departments with different directors that have different layers of expertise. We have our own much larger, you know, financial oversight and administrative piece. So it seems as though this part of it may well be antiquated. And I think there's no sense in, in replicating efforts over and over and over, and especially if it, if it has not been happening, then pragmatically, it's, doesn't make sense to have it in there anyways. So that would be my, I guess I would kind of agree with, with having the Charter Commission take a look at it.
Just for comments. Okay. Staff, do you have your direction? Mr. Walker?
Sounds good. And I don't think you need anything from us.
Mr. Manzer, our Public Works Director?
I see community pride announcements. I have two things I want to share with the council that didn't think was appropriate at the time I was up here. The first one is this Friday at one o'clock at the Four Seasons Shelter, there's going to be a Parks to Prairie kickoff with the Slow Water Conservation Department, the City of Wilmer Public Works and Park Department. So just inviting everybody to attend that. There's going to be some giveaways and whatnot for that. And then the other thing is, you're going to notice, we're starting that robotics of the street assessment program starts tomorrow. It's going to run at least two, maybe three days. So if you see a truck with all these cameras on it, that's what's going on, and they're going to canvas every street. So that's just FYI, in case you get a phone call, so.
Is it going to, is it going to look like a Ghostbuster vehicle?
I'm not sure. You heard might have a better idea on that than I do. They must get calls on it, because they called me to make sure that people know, and I got to let Jim know as well, that dispatch needs to know what's going on.
Red Toyota pickup, big camera on the roof. That looks like a Google car type thing, so that's what it'll look like. Thanks, council.
Okay. Anybody have any community pride announcements? Okay. Councilmember Butterfield had sent in that this weekend, Friday evening through Sunday, is the Wilmer Classic Baseball Tournament. There'll be food and baseball out at our baseball stadium. So, and with that, I know we are getting an eye on to the Wilmer Fest activities that'll be coming up, and so I know that they don't have a lot of candidates this year. I believe there's three candidates that have signed up to be Wilmer Fest candidates. And so just want to get out to the public and remind them that if you want a spot in the parade, I think they have forty-six entries in the parade as of Friday. And so I try to get it in front of the council, ahead of time, letting you know that that's happening. Again, that's during the League of Minnesota Cities Conference in Duluth, and the administrator myself will be up there. And I know, Councilmember Nelson, you were kind of on the fence if you're going or not. Do you know if you're going or not?
I am there, but we'll be back for Friday night.
Okay. So, yeah, I think we'll all be back for Friday night, I think, so. And so, so that's happening, so. Any other community pride announcements for the council? Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, that's right, I'm sorry. Yes. I ended up with two different.
Late addition. So, yes, I would like to ask the council to have a work session next week. Tuesday evening, on the agenda would be a work session about TIF for a project that Sam Herzog is, would like to present to the council. He has presented it to the Planning Commission, and he would like to have some feedback for TIF funding, just as to before he spends considerable dollars into this project. So that is one thing on the agenda. The other thing is also discussion on the ARPA funding. You heard tonight about the Epitopics project and have approved that, so the balance of that funding, we are requesting that that would come from the ARPA money. And then I also, we have received a draft of the auditorium, historical review on that, and they're working on getting that to a final concept for you, so that hopefully will be in final form for you next week also, so that you can have your midnight reading on that, and then that would be, come to the council on the twentieth for council approval. The second, the last thing on, if we get to it, is that I'm going to be working with the Public Works and the Recreational Department on staffing and how that's all going to look in the future, because we do have the Recreational Events Center coming online in September, and what additional staff are we going to need, and how does that look with the Public Works? And are we right now, what we, the current setup is, if that's the way we should continue in the future for Park and Recs and Public Works, as far as how that works outside for the playgrounds and everything else like that. So I just wanted to have a conversation with you on that, too. If Tuesday would work, that would probably be most favorable for majority of us. Six thirty at the fire hall?
Councilmember Plowman?
I was just wondering how set in stone Tuesday was. Is it?
Tuesday or Thursday?
I'd be preferable to Thursday, because then I could make it, but that's just me.
I really can't do either one.
I'll be in Tennessee for both of them as well.
Oh, boy.
And I had already asked Councilmember Fagerly to.
I'll be there.
Take the meeting for me, because I'm not sure if I'll be there.
I can be there. I've got library meeting on Thursday.
Is there another option if we wait?
Well, we, in order to get it in by the twentieth, there isn't much, because Wednesday I am out of town. The fifteenth.
Time?
Six thirty.
I can try. Try it.
In the morning?
Yeah, that would, that would work for me.
Negative.
Julie doesn't do six thirty.
No. Seriously, is there an option to try to do it during the day? If, I mean, I could do it during the day, I cannot do it at night.
It's up to the council. I mean, I'm at, I'm there during the day, but Wednesday I'm not. It's totally up to the council. Daylight, daytime works.
No. Could we do Thursday at noon? That would work for you, right?
No, Thursday at noon, we have our mayor's task force.
Tuesday.
Eleven thirty, the sixteenth.
Tuesday at noon.
The sixteenth, we, at eleven thirty, we have the mayor's task force.
Yeah.
Tuesday at noon?
Tuesday at noon? Could we try?
It works for me.
That won't, I.
I know you won't be out of town.
On Tuesday. I was going to try to get back for Tuesday evening, but I won't, I know for sure I won't make Tuesday noon. Because I'm out of town.
Majority of you can make Tuesday noon, that works.
I think either way.
Can you make Tuesday noon?
I can.
Okay. Because you won't get Councilmember Butterfield.
Or Justin will be out of town also.
Butterfield. I'll try for six thirty. I'll make arrangements.
I'd appreciate us trying at noon.
Noon or six thirty? I mean, we got to make a decision here.
Up to you, not me. Six thirty.
Well, at six thirty, at the six thirty, you're going to have more than you're going to have at noon, and at noon you're going to miss. Is O'Brien going to be back? Do we know?
I don't know for sure.
I think at noon, we would be limited for time more. If it's in the evening, we can probably stay longer.
Right, because she's got three things for sure, and she possibly wants four.
Mm-hmm. I could, they'll leave it more time.
Like I said, potentially I can be there in the, in the evening, but afternoon I can't, so. Who can make, okay, we're making that six, six thirty, six thirty PM.
Okay.
Next Tuesday. Anything else for the good of the order? Motion adjourned.
Thank you.
Second?
Second.